All right, ready to go? Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the January 26th work session, Barrow Board of Education. Welcome, Stephanie. You're the only one not here tonight.
Hello.
First thing we're going to do is review the agenda for our meeting on Groundhog Day next Tuesday. Ms. Kelly, you'll have the implication and the pledge. We'll approve the minutes of last week. We'll approve the agenda. Review the committee reports. Superintendent will have some recognition, I believe, next week, which is fun. We may or may not have some visitors. We may or may not have some requests to appear before the board. And tonight, we're going to be enlightened, first of all, by Dr. Green.
That's a high standard, I think. All right, now, the communications report is there for you to review. I will point out on page three, we mentioned that we did some changes to our website navigation menu to make the translation feature and the search feature more prominent there at the top of these defined. Other than that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. Other than that, I'll finish.
Any questions for Dr. Green? Okay, thank you, sir. Next up, Jennifer Houston.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we will go over the invoices between $10,000 and $24,999 for the month of January. The first one is Enomi Inc., and it was paid out of federal special ed funds for $20,468. This is Goal Block, which is a web-based professional learning and instruct and for our instructors with downloadable instructional supplies and student progress monitoring, and that's district-wide. We also had one to Piedmont Athens Primary, and this was paid out of the general fund for $15,185. And this is for our driver DOT and new employee physicals and transportation. Our next one is to Allen and Allen Consultants out of the general fund for $10,500. And this was the E-Rate consultant. So you know how John St. Clair is talking about his E-Rate. This is the consultant that he paid for, and that's basically for the PDC. The last one is Commercial Glass, and that was paid out of East Bloss Funds for $12,356. And that was for the front glass doors here at the PDC that that maintenance did over the, I would say break, but it really wasn't a break. My next attachment is our SLOFT audit. So every year, we have to have an audit done of our books or the financial book of the district. And then we also have to run for our capital project fund. And they look for compliance with state laws and our local resolution. And we had a clean opinion. This is for actually two years. They caught us up in June 20th and the night, the year 2019. And they had clean opinions and no findings or management letter concerns. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions? Okay, next, Joe Burnham.
Good evening. Just give you an update on our Westside Edition project. Then you can, Wood, just pull the pictures there. Continue to make good progress with the project, and the brick is nearly complete, probably 90% complete now, maybe 95% on the exterior. Interior block is nearly finished as well. Started painting inside. So February 8th, our next part of the day, we'll start to look for ceiling grid to go in at that point. So everything's tracking very well with the project and coming along nicely. That's all we have.
Looking good. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Dr. Moulton.
First thing, I have two documents at your station. And I wanted to go over the vision of our state superintendent, Mr. Woods, and the priorities that he has established from the Department of Education. So the first document is entitled "The Roadmap to Reimagining education." On page two of that document, you can see an overview from Superintendent Woods. And what he has included there is information about how the pandemic has transformed education in Georgia. Specifically, he highlights the changes with school nutrition and the way that we had to deliver meals over the summer, how it has impacted transportation. It's also impacted the way that we organize safety for students in our buildings. Certainly, a big topic has been technology and accessibility across the state. Social emotional learning has also been a big topic, not only in the school system, but in the state as well. And then how we engage with our communities, that also looks different. He goes on to talk about the normal versus the new normal, and how moving forward, the new normal, he does not want to regress to some of the strategies and some of the things that we previously did, how the pandemic has given the opportunities to forge ahead in education. He also lays out his vision, and we'll talk about those 10 goals that are included in his vision in just a moment. But primarily, he talks about providing a well-rounded education for all students in the state of Georgia, also creating multiple diploma pathways, reduction of high-stakes testing, and we've already seen some of that. And then the accountability system, one that would label, would not label educators, but lift up educators and improve our profession. So if you look at page three, you see the first two goals there. As I just mentioned, the well-rounded education, and you see four strategies there. I will not read all of the strategies to you, but primarily with the well-rounded education, there is a focus on additional opportunities for students and focusing on different areas of education, food and science, CTAE, STEM and STEAM, oral languages, and Georgia grown school meals, some of which we already have in place and have a really good start in our school system. On the second one on that page, you see another goal is to adopt a student-led rather than grade-level approach to teaching and learning. And here, the focus is on focusing on academic standards and learning progressions instead of the barriers that come to grouping students and grade bands. So we should see more of a focus there on moving students according to their level of learning and focusing on growth rather than the specific grade bands. Also, there's a focus on early learning there and giving students a great foundation to the start of school so that perhaps there will not be as much focus or time spent on remediation of students having a great start to education. Let's look at page four. You see three goals outlined there. Multiple diploma pathways. And again, that's an area in which we have a great start in Barrow when we think about what's happening at Sims, BASSA, and with dual enrollment. The fourth goal ensures that every high school student graduates with a jumpstart on post-secondary success. Again, we have a great start there with industry certification at BASSA. We have the CTAE, defined arts, and the modern language, and advanced academic pathways in place in Barrow. So I anticipate more to come there and more opportunities for our students. The fifth one, you see three strategies outlined under the fifth goal there, the reduction of high-stakes testing while enhancing formative tools. We've seen a reduction already in the number of tests that students have to take as they matriculate through the grade levels. We've also, in Barrow, we've been using math along the way to assess our students and give them a great level of feedback instead of just the summative one-time test at the end of the year. We are using that formative tool. And the Department of Education has also released a tool called DRC Beacon, which is another formative tool that is available for educators to use.
Dr. Moulton, question?
Absolutely.
Under five, where it says, "Give teachers more instructional time during off-years to remediate or accelerate learning for all students." You know what he's referring to there? I don't know what an off-year is.
During the years that there is not a standardized test that students have to take, like grades three, five, and eight. So perhaps grades six and seven would be the off-year so that teachers can not have that that priority of testing necessarily, but they can really focus on growing students and focusing on where they need additional help.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and I would step in too. I just was in a workshop online today, and one of the things he talked about was even more, is we hopefully can reduce some of, some more of that testing. Those would be more off-years that would come into play too. So if they could get rid of state third grade, then that would give more instructional time there too. So it'd be a combination that just came out today.
And we don't have those in education. But yes, more time focusing on it during those years when there's not standardized tests. And that's music to the ears of Jean Perceinger. On the next page, page five, we have three goals. Goal six, develop an accountability system that aligns to the priorities of local communities and lifts up our schools. Again, a more sound metric to measure school performance instead of the grading system and assigning grades to schools. We know what the connotation of that and what impact that has had on some of our schools, but really taking a look at understanding students and understanding the needs of the community unless, instead of assigning an arbitrary grade. Goal seven, funding, that's always a top priority. And you can see where Superintendent Woods plans to emphasize and place an emphasis for funding, transportation, focusing on poverty, rural growth, rural and low-well schools, and then funding some of those non-academic support areas you see in seven E there, school nurses, counselors, and some other positions he's focused on there. And number eight, again, as I said, there's 11 strategies under this one. But if you look at number eight, you can see it's all about technology. And that is one of the, I guess, the good and bad things that has come out of the pandemic. I guess on the negative side, it's access because not all students and families have access. But you can see here in the first one, 8A, part of Superintendent Woods' vision is to achieve one-to-one device availability for all students and teachers. He also talks about access to high-speed internet and access to technology being a fundamental or a basic resource in high school, in schools, I'm sorry, in schools and families across the state of Georgia. So 11 strategies there. Technology is a big one. If we look at page six, you can see number nine. Flexibility should be given to all schools and not granted. So giving some freedom to schools to make some decisions from, aside from state mandates, is a priority. And then the last goal, and you can see that there are six strategies under the 10th goal, reinventing the teacher evaluation system so that it's more supportive and less punitive, and building the teacher pipeline. Here's another area that we have had a good start on with our partnership with Piedmont College and allowing students to, or allowing staff members who qualify to earn their early childhood certification through that partnership. So definitely a focus on growing our own teachers and increasing that pipeline as we face a shortage across the state.
Dr. Moulton?
Yes.
I love the vision from the state superintendent. From your perspective and your team, what challenges do you see here? I mean, are there certain things in this presentation that you say, wow, this is really going to be tough for us to implement?
Like I said, there are certain areas where we do have, for the most part with all of this, we have a good start in Barrow County because of some of the innovative things that we've done. I do see maybe prioritizing funding and figuring out how to do some of those things may be an area in which we have to expend a little more energy and creativity to support some of the strategies. But like the pathways, we've already got a good start there. I would say staffing would be another area that would be a priority for us and just getting good candidates in front of our students, not just filling positions, but putting qualified candidates in front of our students. And then you have a single-page document that outlines which of those goals are immediate priorities for Superintendent Woods. And you can see that there are three priorities that he's outlined there on this one pager. So you have a full document, and then you have a one-pager that shows you what's in his vision immediately. So expanding the opportunities for students, the diploma pathways. He also talks on that first one about funding for Georgia Department of Education Military Family Liaison. You'll see on this document, he's highlighted a couple of places where he wants to establish key personnel for certain position. And then the second priority is going to be elevating the profession. As I just mentioned, Mr. Ritter, that's going to be a priority, is getting the right people in front of our students. And then the funding, that's always a big one, as I just mentioned as well, not only for the school system, but for the state, prioritizing that funding, the availability of funding. And I would say flexibility in how we can use that funding. SLOST is one of the items that's listed in this document. So giving us some flexibility and removing some restrictions on how we can use funding is going to be helpful as well. Looking at the superintendent's vision and priorities, I'd like to remind you that as a district, we are also engaging in this same process because we are beginning strategic planning for year 2025. And we have community meetings already scheduled. And we will have Appalachian, the Appalachian Cluster will engage in community discussions on Thursday. We'll be doing that virtually. And then on the 11th, we will host the Wynder Barrow Cluster. So we will have a chance to go through this same process and look at what the needs for our school system are and then setting some priorities. So we look forward to that process. Any questions?
Dr. Moulton, we're having our, our federal government, see, have they seen this? And have they given their okay for us to move forward?
Some of these priorities would still have to be reviewed and negotiated and approved through waivers with the U.S. Department of Education. But I think it's great that it's so concise and it's already out there. But I do know, like, the testing and the accountability, that's something that would still have to be approved through a waiver.
Work in progress.
Work in progress.
We've got a, one thing I want to just mention too, since we're talking about funding and legislative priorities. If y'all, legislators are, is back in now. And one of the first bills that was dropped was this year's version of the voucher bill. So I want everyone to take a look at that and be aware. It seems to have a little bit of legs this time due to the fact that they've kind of put a COVID piece in there too, which basically says if you have been out of school, if the whole district's been out of school, then that money should go to those students too. And again, you know, I, I spent seven years in private school, and I understand the, the funding needs there and those type of things. But the biggest thing that bothers me with it, and your mileage may vary, of course, is the lack of transparency with, with the funding. You go on, you know, all of the public schools systems in Georgia, probably across the nation now. But in Georgia, I know for sure, we have to have our budgets online. They have to be accessible line by line, and people can go through them line by line. If this bill were to go through, a part of the Senate now is that the private schools that receive the money do not have to report what they do with the money, which I think is a huge oversight, even, even if I were for vouchers, which is what it is. I don't like it, don't really call it that, but that part would, would throw me off. I, I think any public money needs to have total transparency. This bill would not have that. Each bill, I think 60, but I don't hold any of that, maybe 68. 60. So I would urge y'all to take a look at it, and if you're so moved, reach out to our, our local legislators, legislators, and ask others that might be inclined to do so, to take a look at it out in the community. It's, I'm not someone that rapidly opposes some private money, you know, special ed, those type of things, we're support. But this is a bad bill, what I've seen.
I know the private schools have little lobbyists that are supporters.
Sure.
Are the public, are we doing the same?
Oh, yeah, 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 we have, we have an entire team from the Superintendent's Association, from the School Board Association. We've got some of the best minds in the southeast that are down there. But, you know, it's the voters that make the difference.
Well, you have to follow the money. And the one thing about this that we know is that there are public schools who do terrible jobs. Most of them are not so good.
So we have pretty stringent rules and laws, yep.
Yeah. And, and I, I think by and large, do we need help with a lot of these things in here? Absolutely. But by and large, especially if, I think if you polled our parents and said, if you were given the opportunity to put your child in a private school, would you prefer to do that over our system? And for the majority, they would say no.
I agree.
And that's because of the great work that this board and not this board, but those people sitting out there and in every one of our classrooms do every day. And I think we need to let our legislators know that.
We do too.
If we send that message well and clearly, our lobbying votes can send out there and calls to every teacher and entire people in the state and put a stop to that.
And, you know, and, and again, it's, you know, it's a little bit different time because we are coming off of the pandemic, and some of our school systems are still closed. So there is a little bit, seems to be a little more of an upswell in support. So I think it's even more important. We, we tackle this almost every year, but this year seems to be a little more, have a little more legs on the, under it.
So you get
That goes back to funding what we need here. Because we, you know, I come up with exactly correct, the big challenge for a lot of this is going to be the funding.
You'll receive information to join the Zoom breakout rooms on Thursday and then again on February 11th so that you can hear the community conversation and with, as we begin to build those priorities for Barrow County schools.
That's what I love about you, because I was just going to ask you when you get that one.
Of course you can.
You're always a step ahead.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moulton.
Thank you.
Ms. Beggs, anything now, or we'll talk later? All right. Move on to some old business. We've got policy revision, IDCA dual enrollment, which Dr. Moulton brought forward last time. The superintendent recommends removing policy IDCH dual enrollment from public review and approving said policy. Any discussion that we move that to the consent agenda?
We've had no comments on either one.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Next is policy, policy revision, IHF six graduation requirements entering fall 2008, '09, and thereafter. Dr. Moulton brought forward, the superintendent recommends removing policy IHG six graduation requirements from public review and approving said policy. And discussion about that? No comment? Moving to the consent? Okay. New business. John St. Clair, Chrome charging carts.
Yes, sir, thank you. Requests for Chromebook charging carts come from various sources during the year. Combined, these requests exceed $25,000 to comply with board purchasing policies for purchases over $25,000. A source with a set price for these carts is sought for the remainder of the school year and through the summer. We posted an RFP and had seven responses. The low bid came from Invasion of Glencov, New York. They met the terms of the RFP. They have a satisfactory reputation, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Their cost came in at $1,098.98 per unit. And the financial impact will be that amount per cart from various district budgets. So the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Aver Chromebook charging carts from the low-bid respondent, Invasion of Glencov, New York, for the per-unit cost of $1,098.98 through August 31st, 2021.
John, I know you said these come from various schools, but do we have an estimate of how much you're going to spend on these carts?
I don't, I don't know if Ms. Houston has an estimate, how many we've seen so far. I'm going to guess we may see another 20 to 25 purchased. I could be way off, though. I think it was that Ms. Stevens who asked that?
Yes.
Okay, I, I could be way off, Ms. Stevens, because I don't know what all the schools particularly have planned. I know Title I has quite a few Chromebooks that they're planning to purchase, and so I'm anticipating carts for them at least.
And Invasion of Glencov, New York, I'm not familiar with them. Have we not done business with them?
I don't believe we've done business with them before. They've responded to quite a few of our RFPs in the past. This is the first one they've won. This, again, is one of those situations, though, where they're the conduit for the product. We've bought the Aver cart from other sources many times in the past, and it's an excellent product. And so barring issues with sales, purchasing issues, I'm confident that the product itself will be good, and we won't have any issues with it once it arrives.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Consent agenda? John, you're still up, discretionary technology spending.
Yes, sir, thank you. At the July 28th work session, the board authorized ITS to waive normal purchasing guidelines during the COVID-19 crisis due to product scarcity and high competition for technology from other organizations. Demand was high. People were buying things all over the world. And if you weren't able to jump quickly, you missed out because supply was limited. This authorization was subject to normal chain-of-command oversight and board reporting and allowed the district to rapidly purchase technology when needs and funds were identified and supplies resourced. Previously, by the time the regular protocols were followed, by the time we were able to start the process to purchase, the supply had been depleted before we could actually get the process done. So we applied $100,000 cap to that authorization, and we reached that, close to that, it was about $93,000, I think, when we determined we, we were past that particular point of crisis and the authorization was concluded. We currently face the same situation again. We've received requests, for instance, from two schools, and it's, it's more than that now, to purchase Chromebooks that would have totaled below $25,000. As we attempted to get three quotes, by the time we got the third quote, the first quote was no longer valid. And that would only took a couple of days for the first supplier's chain, supplies to be gone. And since then, additional schools have requested them, moving our total over $25,000, which now puts us at a bid requirement, which now involves several weeks instead of just several days. So this makes purchasing almost impossible with the current status. And so as we work through the second half of the fiscal year and face the peak of the pandemic, this is going to continue to be a problem. We're asking the board to once again approve temporary purchasing discretion and flexibility to the ITS department, allowing us to waive normal purchasing procedures with superintendent approval when necessary due to scarcity or urgent need, while still following the spirit of competitive purchasing practice. So we'll search for the best price. We'll get competitive quotes if they can be had in a timely manner and so forth. And subject, of course, to normal levels of approval through Dr. Green, Dr. Moulton, Ms. Houston. So we are asking for discretion to spend up to a total spending cap of $200,000 this time in various technology purchases when the need arises. And of course, this discretionary authority will not be used unless absolutely necessary. Financial impact will be $200,000 for various district budgets. And so the superintendent recommends authorizing the ITS department to waive normal board purchasing policies during the COVID-19 crisis due to product supplier scarcity or urgent need, subject to a grand total authorization cap of $200,000 in spending authority and subject to best efforts at competitive shopping, normal approval loops, and normal board guidelines for reporting.
How urgent is this? Can you wait until next week?
I, I believe, Dr. McMalco, were you, were you going to address that question?
Yeah, we were going to ask if you could do it to, do it tonight, but we can, we can make it work until next week. Uh, yeah, we were going to ask if you could do it to, do it tonight, but we can, we can make it work until next week. Again, we, we had hoped that we would be in a better position by now, probably didn't ask for more last time. But uh, of course, you know, I have total trust in, in John and his department and Jennifer and hers. They've done a great job with it at this point, but it's still, everything's still locked up on us.
So we're having another surge right now of requests for Chromebooks. Uh, Title has some funding to spend, so we have a lot of requests from them. And competition again with districts in the same situation all around the country, uh, the Chromebook supply is drying up again. That's one of the major pushes right now.
Using federal funds, we'll have to get that by June thirtieth, and that's basically the problem now. Not being able to get the product in by June thirtieth.
So do we have any other discussion or do we want to make a motion to approve this?
Are we sure this time that this is gonna be enough? That two hundred thousand is gonna be enough to get what you need?
I believe it is. I think a hundred thousand will cover what we know of coming from Title funds, which leaves another hundred thousand for the rest of the district. I don't know of any particular urgent needs um for that remaining hundred thousand, so I think that'll cover us for the remainder of the year.
Okay, John, this is Ricky Bailey. Would it be possible to get like a monthly update on how you're spending these funds and how that seems to be going?
I, I can do that. I can do that.
Yes, sir. We, we, we track any of those in a separate spreadsheet and I coordinate with Ms. Houston, so yes, yes, she can, she will have that information from me.
A big right. Thank you.
Well, if you can get past Dr. McMichael and Ms. Houston and everybody else who's done
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Mr. Pernell, summer renovation project, Appalachian.
In two thousand eighteen, you all approved Grail Construction to perform renovation work at Appalachian High School. Uh, they're a construction manager on that project and we originally had that set up to be uh a four-phase renovation project that work being done each summer. Last summer, Grail Construction believed that they could take on phases two and three. Phases one through three were HVAC, replacing the HVAC system in the original building. We gave them two summers to do the, replace the units of the ceiling. They said, well, we think we can get all this done last summer. We pressed them on that pretty hard, wanted to make sure they were weren't biting off more than they could chew. They did, they got it completed. So what they've been able to do is compress the schedule and this coming summer will be the renovation work to the building finishes, the flooring and painting. That'll be throughout the building, not just the old portion of the school. Um, so I'd say that to say that, that Grail really got on it and, and accelerated the schedule to be able to get out of the school in three summers instead of four. So a big thank you to them, also the school staff, Jennifer Martin, Ralph Neely and others. Hamon Morris and Yargo as well. They accommodated uh Appalachian, kind of getting out into other places to do uh a lot of their athletics and things like that during the summer, so uh, it was a great team effort. And um, that leads us to a recommendation tonight. We've applied to the state for renovation dollars. And uh, so our recommendation is uh, a guaranteed maximum price of three million dollars for renovations to Appalachian High School, SPOSS six and State Department of Education capital outlay funding is the source of funds for the project. Uh, over the past couple of years, we've also done a little bit of work for renovation. We put the classroom cameras in place. We put the best, uh, security vestibule up front. Um, lighting was done several years ago uh through a contract with Georgia Power, so we chipped away at this. It's really the only way to do it in a high school especially. This will be the last piece uh for a little while out there, we hope. Uh, unless something comes up, so that's, that's our recommendation this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Joe, it says that painting informed with the mainscope isn't anything else we had.
Uh, you know, we're, we're trying to grab a few other things that the school has brought to us as pressing items. One of those is uh fencing out there on the site. Um, it's, it's a madhouse out there. As, as you can imagine, you've got uh, JV and varsity teams and you've got the recreation department and so they, they need a little help, kind of getting things separated out there, and so that'll be a big piece of it. I think uh, trying to get their school board outfitted in the, in the gym with the shot clock and just some things like that that we can grab while we're there. And again, this is a guaranteed maximum price, so you know, we we feel like we can probably even come in under that as well, but, but that's the, the ceiling on it.
Consent agenda? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Dr. Green, bus parts.
Yes, sir, and I'm gonna tag team with Jason Ayers, our relatively new director of transportation. He came October eighteen. So he's been in a little over a, a year, but he's not had the privilege of presenting a recommendation. Nineteen, thank you. We're in twenty-one now, so um pandemic has just got us, got me all um off the years. But anyway, he's not had the opportunity to present an action item to the um board yet, so we're gonna get him trained up so he can begin to do that, and so I'm gonna present the um the recommendations and then Jason will come up here and he'll answer any questions you have. He'll explain things for you a little better than maybe I could on particularly items five and six as we get into those. Um, so we'll start with item four. The superintendent recommends approval of adding Yancey Bus Sales and Services list of bus outsourced vendors for uh two thousand for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Um, when you look at the bus outsourced vendors attachment, the top portion of that you approved back in the early summer, but Yancey Brothers was not on that list. However, we still have Bluebird buses and the only place to get Bluebird parts and service is with Yancey Brothers. So we, we can get them through another vendor, but they have to get them from Yancey Brothers, which means the double markup and the laying parts and that sort of thing. So basically what we're asking is to add Yancey Brothers to the already approved bus outsourced vendors list so that we can direct, deal directly with them for our Bluebird parts and services.
Doesn't Yancey build buses also? Same answer.
That's why I asked Jason to come up here. So Jason will come on up here and answer your question.
Yeah, Yancey is, Yancey is Bluebird. Basically one of the same. You don't, it's a Bluebird bus, but it's a Caterpillar or Yancey, yeah, that's the same vendor, one of the same company for that part.
Is that, isn't Yancey the bus company that we had problems with buses and paint and that's what we're buying, was that somebody else?
Yes, you had issues here with buses, paint coming off of them, actually. Coming off, except we painted all of the hoods, but uh Jerry's still out of that store.
What, last, is it the same management?
Part of it.
Same people there?
Yes, yes, this is like people we deal with the same, the same people. Of course, contacted not sales, uh, with the company, but you look across at the paint issue, it was more of a EPA industry type thing with primers and paints and similar, you know, it kind of trickles down to that type of thing.
So basically, if I understand this, we need to do the, we need to have Yancey on this list in order to save money for parts.
Yes, there's certainly.
We're not adding, we wouldn't be buying buses from them.
No, we're not looking at buying buses. This is simply just for the, the vendor service, the parts and anything else we need. Uh, the other thing I'll mention of this, they're also the vendor that we purchased our video systems off of. That's not all we're gonna just have to think about it. Uh, some of the part, the units that we're gonna give to the schools, which are called dongles, it, it utilizes Wi-Fi so we can, we don't have full video hard drive, we can use a cell phone or whatever, as long as we got a signal. This is the same vendor we use uh for those, purchasing those as well, so uh, that's kind of, you know, kind of more of the part. Uh, I just have to think about that.
And so we're happy with, with the way that's working out.
Yes, I think those aspects is kind of something we're willing to do, we just prevent the markup and they are also sourced from certain, our specific source for certain things, because we have priced these same units to another vendor, it's markup, markup. You're trying to, we're just trying to, you know, that aspect of
Now, it just wasn't the Bluebirds that we were having trouble with painting for.
The only ones I'm aware of is Bluebirds. Here, I don't know any, that, that's the only thing that's that good to uh throw across my desk or anything. So if you know how old those buses are? No, I do not. I can find out if, if you want to know that, but I, I'm not sure uh what the answer is. I think it's gonna watch.
Year range that we had trouble with painting the boats out. What that year range was, it's kind of a little
I think the notion of it is this, the paint shit would be coming off of that. I mean, that is just to sum it up, it was just that bus should not, those buses, they should not have been seen that night.
Yeah, it was that, and I think there was a little bit too uh, um, we really had to work hard to get them to honor.
I was thinking, well, you're right, it was a little bit of a long race in the contest uh to get some of that done, and so yes, that was, that was my rationale for that. But that was, that was on the bus side. Yancey had the bus side, didn't have a, you know, service side, so we're, we're leaning towards the service side, just kind of get it for this.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. I think you're not going to.
Number five. We're gonna do most of this, Jason, number five, this is supposed to get into the radio and get some more bit more complicated. I will try to pack it for you. Uh, the recommendation is superintendent recommends approval of additional equipment. That was, you may remember back in September, we approved RFP for our switch number two, integral of radio system transportation. So I just wanna mention that. This would, recommendation is to purchase additional equipment, I originally requested the official bus radio upgrade RFP for reception refers in order to fully upgrade the radio system. They got into the process of installing that and realized additional for the stadium. I'll let Jason explain um the two components of this recommendation.
Uh, yeah, just echo what Ken had already said. When we got into the install, I'll go back to when we ripped the RFP. Um, I, I just basically looked at it as new equipment, replace old equipment, simple as that. Uh, when we got into the install, naturally I'm sitting here seeing how we could use a system to benefit this size of the county. So we were trying to say more channels and all that, if you, if you, it's very entertaining if you ever hear our radios, you know, going at route times and stuff like that. Plus, we're trying to utilize, we're trying to set our schools up better too, uh, to communicate with them uh and everything. But what happened was when we got to the unit, we had one repeater, our own system, one channel. That's one repeater. I wanted to put four channels in place, uh, so that's two repeaters. You can put two channels per repeater. So that gets into that dialogue, you know, we're doing, we're moving forward with that part. What happened was when we got into the actual install aspects, based on, some of it was my assumptions, I'll just take that, but uh, when we looked at that, I asked, you know, I asked the question, oh, we're still gonna have our own channel? They said, oh, your own system will be there. So I can, I put it in my head that we're gonna have five channels. We got four new channels, one old channel, we got the old system, you know, the new system. I did not go into the technical aspects. Those systems can't join. You can't use both systems simultaneously. You have to have one plugged in, one unplugged to run through the antenna property. There's not a piece of equipment that would adapt it, you know, to the, the analog system uh to the antenna on the tower. Uh, then it goes into, do we need to add an antenna on the tower? Well, the problem with the tower that we're on, emergency services has primary position on that, on that tower. And that tower, what we found out from some technicians that found the towers that's removed in Barrow County, uh, that tower was pretty crowded. So then the discussion was, how can we make what we have with one antenna work? Well, we got into the combiner and it does simply that. It combines those repeaters into, one unit goes to one antenna, so we can basically do that. So I stood before, some of you, you were here, you remember, I said five channels. We talked about that, so I'm like, man, I need to see if we can make this five channels work, because it puts us back and forward. I already had it laid out, what we were wanting to do was communicate with our schools and, you know, how we're willing to function. So then I said, well, what would it cost to add two channels? So they come up to the, or add the channel back, and then you add the other piece to the combiner, which is another, another portion to it. And they have to put it in, tune it, do all that, and they have to have a license uh from the FCC, you know, expand the system and all that, but all of this can be used through the one antenna. So that's kind of, that's kind of the, the combined, you know, the combined, combined explanation of that. Uh, but the good thing is we'll be able to grow and expand any way we need to with that system as it is. We will not outgrow that system. The way, not, not while I'm here, but some of you may be around, but in my time, we won't outgrow this system. This system will make it system. It's gonna set up and it'll handle anything we can go add.
I'm missing a dollar amount on this.
Uh, thirty-five, uh, three seventy-two sixteen code for both parts of that, the combiner and then the license and the extra channels and the repeaters.
It was twice. And a couple of things I forgot to mention the last time I was speaking on our radios in here. Two things they'll have. One thing they'll have is caller ID. So if you're at a school and you've got a hand held, you've got a string, we've got the radio programmed to the bus room. So if, if a driver's in distress, if the driver got to bed, you know, becomes incapacitated, whatever, a child gets on the radio and just scream for help, guess what? We know exactly what bus it is. We can ping that bus on our system real quick and we can have emergency services out there, we'll be out there whenever. So the other thing is there are things that happen up the radios that you need to know who's doing it. If a child gets on the radio, bus parked somewhere, turns the switch, it almost starts playing on the radio, we know where that bus is at. Which leads me into the other benefit of these radios. There's a stun scene on these things. If I like it, if you're an administrator, you can type in a code, you can stun that radio from where you're at and shut it off. So there's several aspects to it that, you know, the benefits, you know, on that part, so. And with the six channels, what we're gonna have is a channel per area. And the district will have a shop channel and an administrative or an emergency channel. So we will have total flexibility to do exercises, maneuvers, communicate, whatever we need to do. Sometimes your radios will get out of yourself, or you might need to have a good conversation, and that may be the one tool we've got to get to.
And to use it for the drivers, somebody can figure out how to use it?
Oh, drivers, I tell you this, we launched that system out last week. We tested it every day here in this county. There are none that we can buy.
Right.
Yeah, we can also speak to Run, that's over in Athens. Those things are getting out all the way to Jefferson, so we've got, we've expanded on coverage here and things like that. So it just really, really cleaned up the whole lot. Got a setup, a speed, a whole break. Yes.
Is it a retention piece? I mean, do you look at it as driver retention?
Well, certainly, I think anything that we did, the next year, it's obviously not less frustrating. I think that's part of the radio, is there to be dead spots, there to be there to be other things that would make communicating back and forth very frustrating, you know, if you've been in a job that's has a continual frustrating element to it, you know, you're just not as happy as you would be if everything worked the way it should work. Certainly, the digital radio system has solved those frustrating aspects. So I definitely think that people will be more inclined to stay in the job.
Right, and, and a little bit more of what Ken just said, we use a dispatcher and the schools or whatever, whoever they call their own drivers, they have to call the dispatcher, then the dispatcher, dispatcher, it's kind of a waiting list. Right, not to take a number, not like this way is straight to whoever they need. There's no waiting, it's immediate. You know, that's, just trying to clean it all up between us and then we're gonna expand the system then.
Consent agenda?
So you just probably just said the words, we're gonna expand the system into the schools, and so that is number six. In order to add base stations at each school. So it's the equipment that is needed to set up a base station in school. They'll have radios, they can use the bus lanes. They have their own radios, they can use the bus lanes, we're going to talk, they'll be getting hot in that concrete and that, those smaller radios that are handheld, they'll penetrate that as well. So this is to be able to allow us to add the equipment to set up a base unit inside the school buildings, and all the elementary questions we're gonna have related to that. If I answer, let me back to three five zero nine five. Those ones.
Biggest thing with me is getting, getting our students radios. I came from a district that our students had radios. I'm just going, you know what? This is just communication piece that we need to be had. Uh, but again, uh, they will have handhelds, uh, they were part of that original purchase. And going into it, when they go, go into the building, like Ken said, brick and mortar buildings are not counting, they're not selling. Uh, these units are being installed, all this is included in the stall prices. Uh, we'll put them wherever they, they look to that, student administrators want them, they'll install them. They'll have an external antenna, so pretty much guaranteeing whatever communication the students need to have with us with the buses, with the buses to the school, any way you can think about it, we're just trying to lock it in, we have no more issues. So as I said, we're just trying to clean it up once and probably don't. So very, very excited about, you know, trying to get that served up, but this is gonna be a, be a great place to have it.
Yeah, I think.
So if they have any issue, they call, they can radio, be direct, the student, but they do not have to call phones. Anything can go straight to us. I love it. I mean, it's just easy, perfect.
That's what I was about to say, having sat in that chair and tried to get her on the phone at times, too.
Yes.
That, that, um, you will make a lot of friendships happen with that.
So, yeah, I'm excited. We're not gonna put the students on it right now. We want to get our, we want to knock. So, yeah, I'm excited, we're not gonna put the students on it right now, we want to get our, we want to not, we want to get a little better at what we're doing. So we're not entertaining to the students when they get radios and to hear us. So we're working that out, but when we split it up into four channels the other week, last week, the one thing I got was it's so quiet. Well, it's not quiet, it's normal, you're just in four pieces now. So it just comes a lot of ways, it was just a timely, very timely thing.
Question?
So I take it that this is gonna cover what we're doing right now, that as we add buses and drivers and all this?
This will totally take it off, it will make no difference to this, this system will harness, if we grew, say, ten thousand kids in the next five years, we won't have any students ready.
But we, I mean, we still have to buy radios for the new buses and those kinds of things, but as far as the system that controls it all.
And the system can be added onto real easy, but the six channels, I do not see us ever having to, you know, branch out any further than what we're on.
Well, we had ten thousand.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Jason, you had a good night?
Hey, thank you, appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Okay, um. We want to vote on the, uh, we're going to, go ahead and go in the executive session. Okay, we'll have all the votes. No committees right now. We're going to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal. Or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. In addition, we'll discuss, we'll vote to authorize negotiation for purchase, dispose of or lease property. Authorize ordering and appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate. Enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of or lease property, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of or lease real estate, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Ricky?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.